Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City's Council, scheduled for this June 18th, 2018. It's after 7:30 PM. Next meeting will be Monday, July 2nd, 2018. If you would, Mr. Paulo, please call the roll.
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bastancic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
And everyone's here, so we have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented. At this time, I ask that you stand and join the members of the Worcester City Council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have two sets of minutes to approve, one for the June 4th meeting, a regular meeting, and then we had a special meeting on June 12th. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the June 4th, 2018, meeting minutes.
Summit.
Motion to approve by Mr. Silvestri, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The June 4th minutes are approved. That takes us to the June 12th special meeting. Again, I would entertain a motion for approval of those minutes.
Summit.
Motion to approve by Mr. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. All in favor of approving the June 12th minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. June 12th minutes are approved. That brings us communications from the mayor slash administration, so I'm going to assume it's going to be from Mr. Montgomery, if anything.
I have nothing.
Oh, refreshing. All right. That brings us to petitions, I don't see any. And there's no one signed up to speak tonight, so that brings us to committee reports. We had a laws and ordinance meeting tonight, do you want to recap that, Mr. Sanders, or do you want to do it another time?
No, I just give a brief synopsis.
Great.
We held laws and ordinance committee meeting this evening. Basically, we had a full complement of council here for that meeting, including the actual committee members. And the discussion was proposed annexation of 162 acres along Friendsville Road, both on the east and west side. At this point, the petitioner had his attorney present. They described what they're potentially looking to do with the property. There was many questions ensued, many answers provided, and at this point, I believe we've vetted this fairly well, so that's, that was our meeting.
All right. Nicely conducted, I might say. Okay, that brings us to public hearings, which there's one scheduled to be held by Mr. Ansel, dealing with the 2019 tax budget. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Ansel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to call a public meeting on behalf of the Finance Committee to solicit to public feedback regarding the 2018 budget for the city of Worcester. This is our annual process, in which we submit by July 20th to the Wayne County Auditor with our revenue and expense projections for the upcoming year. This is just the precursor to the final process, which we complete during the month of November, months of November and December. So these are the preliminary projections based on current year and prior year's revenue and what we anticipate for the upcoming year. So with that, I would open the floor for any public comments regarding the proposed 2018 budget.
19.
19 budget. Mr. Garrus.
Yes, thank you. How many more of these hearings will there be before the law?
Well, we were prepared this evening, because this is the second reading. It's been read now for two weeks. It's very straightforward, and the heavy lifting, as you're well aware, comes at the end of the year when we do the line item by line item breakdown, the general ledger summary, which is much more comprehensive. These are the groupings in terms of anticipated tax revenues and expenses. And I will highlight, and I was going to make this in the second reading, we're continuing the trend of capital improvements, and it's certainly another hefty amount projected for 2019 at $5.455 million, of which I'm sure we'll complete this year with the continued spending to catch up for past delays or holds for, because of cash limitations.
And may I ask, are you still the Finance Chairman?
Yes.
You are?
Yes. You're welcome. Any other questions from attendees in the audience? We welcome any questions or concerns. Andre in the Finance Department for the city of Worcester does a very thorough job. It's nice to see such healthy revenue projections. And again, just for reference, the total revenue for 2019 is up about 2% to prior year, which will be budgeted at $25,948,546, so about $26 million of revenue. Yes, Mr. Garrus.
May I ask, just off on the side, did you know where the mayor is this evening?
I believe Mr. Mayor's on vacation. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing no other questions, I will close the Finance Committee meeting for the appropriation budget for 2018.
Tax budget.
Tax budget for 2018, and we will be prepared to move this to third and final reading this evening.
Okay, well, considered that the public hearing as required for the 2019 tax budget has been held. Brings us to old business, second reading of Resolution Number 2018-036, which is the resolution for the annual tax budget. It will be presented by Mr. Ansel. If you would, Mr. Paulo, please read the title.
Resolution Number 2018-036, a resolution providing for the annual tax budget for 2019.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, we've just talked about that in our public hearing, and I shared some details, but we know we have the qualified timeline. This has to be approved on or before July 20th, 2018, and we are, the last meeting is going to be on July 2nd. But again, we've had a couple of weeks to review the tax forecast and also the appropriation budget forecast. So again, very straightforward, very thorough. We've had time to, you know, ask Andre and his group any questions that we might have. And at the discretion of council, I would like to move this to third and final reading this evening, just to ensure that we do comply with the timelines as required by the county auditor.
Is that a motion?
Seeing no questions yet, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and move Resolution 2018-36 to third and final reading, Mr. President.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. And we'll have a chance to discuss further after you make a motion, assuming this passes. So if he would please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules, I would be thankful.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
All right.
Barring any questions or comments?
Well, no.
Oh, okay. Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Now, comments, questions, input, again.
Councilman Myers?
There's one thing I noted in there under the exhibit four on the permit improvements. It appears as though there's another $2 million to be spent on the square on the south side. And I know we spent a lot of money on the north side, but there's the new gazebo and things. It seemed like $2 million on the south side seemed like a lot just to replace a sidewalk, but I'm sure we'll get more detail on that going forward.
It just came about our 10-year capital plan.
Pulled right off the 10-year forecast.
And it was discussed when we were talking about the improvements, because I think that, and Joel will know better, I think the overall cost of improvements which is projected are around $5 million plus.
Something like that. We'll just evaluate and go phases when we get into the real process.
Right. So, you know, my guess is we'll know better, because the appropriations is what we pass to authorize what can be spent without further ordinance.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Myers.
That's a good point. Anyone else? I assume this is a budget that the administration feels comfortable with?
Yes.
Yes.
Speak up. Hurry, yes.
I heard you say yes, but I fanged deafness just to make the talk. All right. Seeing no further questions, would you call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
And I'd just like to say, even though $25 million is, or 26 is a lot of money, but I think over the years, we have, as council and as the city administration, spent money wisely and have done a very good job of watching the expenses, and nothing's really gone, exceeded what we've kept our thumb on. Some other municipalities obviously have gotten in trouble when they spend everything in the good times and then have nothing when the times aren't so good, so, you know, congratulations this council and to the administration. That brings us to new business, first reading for Resolution Number 2018-040. It's slated for three readings, and it is presented by Mr. Bastancic. Would you please read the title?
Resolution Number 2018-040, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of State Route 585 between Shaeffler Way and the new State Route 585 with the city of Worcester and declaring an emergency.
And as you will note with the attachment, this is one of those resolutions that are prepared by the state, so it doesn't look exactly that like what we normally pass. Mr. Bastancic, the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, well, thank you. This is pretty much simply a request for the city to give ODOT permission to resurface part of the State Route 85 between Shaeffler Way to about where the new State Route 85 is paved, or will be paved. And all this is within the city's limits, so they're asking our permission to do so. This is from Shaeffler Way, it's about 900 feet to where they, within the city limits to where they're going to start, outside the city limits. As this section is within the city limits, all they're asking is our permission to do so. They are going to provide 80%, they're going to pay for 80% of the cost, which the total cost would be about $48,000. Our cost will be about $16,700. And this is pretty much an 80/20 deal, and they're just asking our permission to go ahead and enter an agreement with the city. In a sense, it's almost a gift, so.
It's always hard to turn down what would ultimately be our responsibility if the state didn't pay, so.
Yeah, and this would be something that would be included in the 2019 capital budget as well.
This is just the agreement.
This is just the agreement, yes. Any questions?
Just on the request for agenda item authorization for bid, it's showing estimated total cost is zero, and under the description of purchase, it's showing $16,700, which I know, I mean, it's just a typo apparently.
Sure, 20% is the $16,700. It's not in this year's budget.
Oh, is that why it's zero?
Right, yeah. Yeah, I'll put it next to his budget, so it can be $20,700.
Okay, thanks.
If there are no other questions, I would like to move to put this on third and final, since it's not a budget item, we have to motion for this, so we can start as soon as possible to get this moving.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bastancic, is there a second? Second by Mr. Cavan. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Rules are suspended. What's to you again, Mr. Bastancic?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic, is there a second? Second by Mr. Cavan. Were you guys being bookends tonight?
Pretty much.
Okay. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2018-040 passes. Resolution Number 2018-041 is next on the agenda, it's presented by Ms. Warden. It is a budgeted matter, so will not require suspension of the rules or three readings. But before I get to you, Ms. Warden, I will kindly ask Ms. DePaulo to read the title.
Resolution Number 2018-041, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the replacement of steel siding to the property at 1151 Mechanicsburg Road for public property maintenance division.
Okay, Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Basically, we are asking to fund the replacement of the steel siding on the public property maintenance building that is located at, I know the address is on here, well, on Mechanicsburg Road. The estimated cost is $150,000, and the project will also consist of the removal and recycling of the existing steel. The building was built in 1973, and unless my math is wrong, I think this says that the original siding is 43 years old. I believe it's a little bit older than that. My husband was born in 1975, so, doing the math, and he's 43, so.
You're making me feel older, Warden.
Sorry, sorry for that. But anyways, the siding has obviously aged, and there are a couple of water problems with the building, thus the insulation will also be replaced. This is a maintenance facility, and it houses many city trucks and a lot of equipment that are very useful maintenance professionals use, so it's very important that we keep them housed very efficiently. Does anyone have any questions?
If I recall, about the only thing that's really had major attention to, maybe I'm thinking another building, was the roof, there was some roof issues as well. Yeah. But other than that, it's held up, and to have it for, you know, 45 years, I think we got our initial monies worth.
When are you planning to go out for bid?
Soon as we draw up the specs, finalize that, and then we'll have time for bid, and hopefully we'll have a W for exit.
Okay.
And Mr. Dunning was kind enough to share this rendering of the new color that the building will, if you can see, it's kind of a gray.
Is it a dark color?
It is.
Much nicer.
Yeah, much, I mean, it brings it, it updates the look quite a bit more, I think.
And no truth to the rumor to celebrate its opening, you're going to have another Dogwood Dance there in the.
Hello.
Okay.
If there are no further.
That's for those old timers who were born before 1975.
I remember hearing about the Dogwood Dance.
Hearing is the operative word, isn't it?
I read about it in History, I'm kidding.
Yeah.
That was a good name.
Absolutely.
Yeah. If there are no further questions, I would like to move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by the young Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
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 Yes.
Ansel?
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 Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Ansel?
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 Yes.
And as Mr. Sylvester pointed out, now to replace that, we have to rely on eBay or a secondary market to buy used equipment. Okay. Thank you.
So this one failed 10 years ago, but we do have controllers that have been in operation since 98, right, 2020, or something? Is that right?
How many, I'm sorry. How many controllers are, do you use?
At the, at the water plant, really, that is the main one or the one similar to that he's holding in front of him. And then there is one remote processor that runs the filtration system. But really, that's, as far as processors, those are the only two. Now, there's multiple input-output cars that are tied into that system. Probably, I'm gonna guess, close to 3,000 of those.
And those should all synchronize seamlessly with the new?
Yes.
Okay.
And some of those will have to be replaced because the communication of the new processor is just a little bit different.
Is that included in the cost?
Yes.
Mr. Dordia, this is out of the water fund, not the general fund.
Correct. The other utility funds.
Yeah. Anything else?
Just a quick question. So is that one processor, that was the $150,000, basically?
No, no.
Or are there multiple processors that live that to go on?
It's just that processor, you have a new rack that that fits into because the new ones will not fit into the old rack. So that one, we take it out, new one will be put in. New processor, new input-output cars, new communication cars. And then that also includes the migration and the integrator that's going to do that for us. So that project, Allen Radley makes a program that will help migrate that over so we don't have to rewrite all the code. But I'm not a PLC expert. I, I know about what I've told you so far. I've never really programmed one, except in just classes that I've taken over the years. But we'll have an integrator come in, go over all of that. He'll actually do that off-site before he comes in and puts a new processor on. It'll be tested off-site and then when they install it, it should be up and running.
And that includes the installation and everything?
Correct.
Thank you.
Hearing us? Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2018 Day 042 passes. Our final piece tonight, Resolution Number 2018 Day 043. It'll be presented by Mr. Sylvester. It's also budgeted, so no three readings or suspension of the rules necessary. But it is necessary to ask Ms. DePaulo to read for the last time this evening the title.
Resolution Number 2018-043. A resolution authorizing Director of Administration to purchase a vehicle in accordance with the capital plan for 2018.
Mr. Sylvester, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. While we're pretty much at separate ends of the spectrum this evening, this is small, complicated, and out of sight. And we're moving to large, I guess, maybe equally complicated, but, but simple in function and highly visible. But this is a replacement VAC truck. The current one is 20 years old. And we've replaced various parts. And it's becoming cost prohibitive to repair and continue to keep in operation our current VAC jetter truck. It's kind of the Utilities Division Emergency Response Vehicle, if you look under the justification benefits section. So it can be used to clear block sewer lines, empty tanks, mitigate spills, clean manholes, lift stations, and evacuate work areas. Not long ago, this council authorized the city to contract out a clearing of a, I think it was a, a catch basin. And it's my understanding these, this, this unit can, can do some of those similar types of functions. So I've actually seen it in use, I think, right out in front of my house. The city came out and hooked up lines and stuck them in manholes and did what they do. And I wasn't even aware of any blockages, but they must have found one and took care of the problem. So we are able to leverage state bid, so we'll get the most competitive price possible on this. And I asked about the current unit, what was gonna happen with that. And I know our Public Properties Maintenance Division would like to have that at their disposal to use where necessary. So I know, I know just our sewer functions alone pretty much use this on a day-to-day basis, right, Kevin? So highly important, critical piece of equipment for our, for our city management. I would move for adoption.
Second. Motion to adopt by Mr. Sylvester, second by Mr. Ansel. Any further discussion? Seeing 20 years is, they got a hard, a lot of hard use. And I know over the years, we've kind of cobbled repairs together. So if you're using it on a daily basis, you don't want it to keep having to break down.
And having a backup's a good value also.
Yeah. And I know that Mr. Danning and his unit will take good care of it. Seeing no further discussion, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Resolution Number 2018 Day 043 passes. And then we'll turn to the miscellaneous portion here. And we'll start out with Mr. Sylvester.
I have nothing to add this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Ms. Warden?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Mr. Ansel?
Nothing.
Mr. Kevin?
Nothing to add, I suppose.
Mr. Bestancic?
Nothing more.
Mr. Myers?
Nothing to see, thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Mr. Ansel, thank you for motioning to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye. We're adjourned.
Well done.